City Council, go order Monday, September the eighth, two thousand and fourteen. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Daughery.
Here.
McManus. Midnight.
Here.
And Mizell.
Here.
Thank you.
Please, you're gonna do the go call on the minutes.
Whichever you want to.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of the last regular council meeting, eight twenty-five fourteen. Second. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear heavenly father, we come tonight thanking you for the many blessings that you've given each and every one of us. Be with this meeting that each decision that we make will be for the better of the community. Be with the ones in our community, dear heavenly father, that have suffered the loss of loved one. Be with the ones, dear heavenly father, that has sick ones. Not only be with the sick, be with the caregivers. Be with our armed service personnel, not only on foreign ground, but here in the United States, guide and direct their lives, bring them safely home to their families. Ask it thy precious name. Amen. First item, citizen request. We have some guests tonight. We have Mike and Mike. Pollock, are you going to lead who the honors?
Yes, I'm Mike. I'll start. And it's getting to feel like home now.
Good.
I'm rather enjoying your community. I've left the handout, which gives you a little more detail than what we had last time we were here. I'll go into a little bit of the detail again, who you, who we are, and refresh your memory, and tell you what we really want to accomplish. Mike will get into details in terms of what the building is starting to look like and the things that we have. In, in your packet is a rough sketch of our floor plan, which will give you some sort of an idea of what it's gonna look like. This is our first draft. We're gonna get into it in a little more detail as we go along. We've hired some engineers out of Decatur and have been working very closely with them. Again, the company who is applying for the license is Patient Care Solution. We are a, we like to say, new wave cannabis cultivation center because we're gonna be state of the art. We're gonna be offering a variety of medicines, one of which will be distributed through vaporization. So that there won't be any smell, there won't be any significant smell as normally you'd find in smoking marijuana. We also, the products, I'm not quite sure at the moment, we've decided exactly what those are. We're gonna have a separate state of the art growing system. We're gonna have a separate packaging room. Well, Mike will go over that. And as you know, Mike is a resident of Oakbrook. He's been a former, has, has really a storied past. He's a veteran. He's been a police officer, a correctional officer, and now he has a very successful fire protection and security business. So he's gonna be designing this, this system that he'll talk about later. His company currently employs approximately seventy-five people, so it's a fairly large company and really gets involved in that designing of security systems. The other gentleman involved, who we've met, was Craig DeLuca. Craig has, I don't know if you can call it his day job, is really involved in lighting. And he does computer operated lighting systems for the movies. He did lighting, a lighting system to light up the pyramids. I mean, he does major lighting jobs that are computer controlled. He also has a, he's a managing partner of a co-op in California where he grows marijuana. He's a, of the managing partner in a, in a firm called High End Medical, Inc., and he grows for about a hundred patients. And California is so much different than, than what we have here. There's no security. There's no, I mean, it might as, it might as well be like farming corn. There's really nothing out there. Here, Mike will go in a little bit about the, the security system that he's got to put in. Kevin Mulryan, Mike's son, is involved in our sales. He's, he's gonna be the guy. He's a traveling sales manager. He's gonna be going around the area. One of the good things, I think, for this area is that growing down here means we wanna service this part of the state. So that we will not only go all over the state, but we will emphasize serving Southern Illinois. We, we have told you in the past that we will, we want to employ local. We'll first look in Metropolis. We'll look after, if we can't satisfy the employment requirements, we'll look to Massach County. But we want to be here first and spread out from here. And we feel that we'll be able to do, we'll be able to do that. So without going and boring you too much, we have the initial plot plan that's in your packet. And then Mike will explain the design that we've got. And then we'll answer any questions.
Mike, would you, would you care if I interrupt your presentation for just a minute? We have a couple of police officers here. They are on duty tonight. And I apologize for interrupting you, but we do, we had a situation last week, and you are a police officer, an ex-police officer.
I am.
You know, this kind of, you'll understand just a little bit about, you know, what I'm fixing to do here. Chief Massey actually brought it to my attention today that Officer Helm and Officer Manley were very instrumental in the saving of a life on Friday, nine five fourteen. Actually, it was a nine-one-one call came into the county dispatch, or the city dispatch one. And they actually had a suicidal individual that actually got in a tree, had a rope tied to his neck. And as they arrived, the city actually responded over, it was in the county. City was actually the closest, so they responded. And were, the two of them were responsible to save the gentleman's life. One of them helped the gentleman up while the other one cut the rope and actually lowered him back down to the ground. Is that even really close? Harry gave me all this now. Is this even close, guys, to what happened?
It's close enough for government work.
I, I didn't wanna take a chance, and I, I do apologize for interrupting what we were doing there, but they may get called back out and everything like that. This is important to us as a, as a city. So on behalf of the city of Metropolis, we have a couple of certificates of achievement to Officer Helm and Officer Manley in recognition of the life-saving efforts conducted on September the fifth. Upon hearing a call dispatched to a resident in Massach County for an attempted suicide, you responded and arrived shortly thereafter. Arriving on scene prior to county deputies, you were able to evaluate the situation and make the necessary moves in order to prevent the victim amending his own life. If you guys would come forward, we're actually going to get a picture, and I'd like to give you these certificates. We do appreciate, you know, we not only get on you, and sometimes Harry does, but every once in a while, y'all do something real good, and we're gonna recognize you.
We did good.
You did good. See, you guys get real close.
Yeah.
All right, one, two, three. One, two.
And thank you, guys, again.
Thank you for your job. Well done. You too, officer.
Now we'll get back to our scheduled events.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank you again, the city council, for having Mike Pollock and myself back here to answer any questions that you might have. Mike mentioned a little bit about my background. I'll just reiterate a little bit. When I got out, I spent three years in the army. When I got out, I became a correctional officer up in Chicago. So I was essentially a prison guard, a correctional guard up at the Cook County Jail, House of Corrections. And after that, I became a police officer, actually up in Forest Park. Do you know where that's at?
Sure do.
So I was a police officer up there, and at that time, I started the business I'm currently in today. And we are a, I guess, a medium, a large-sized security company up in the Chicago area. And we specialize in security systems and life safety systems, fire alarm systems. And we design, engineer, and install those for businesses as small as a couple thousand square feet up at the University of Chicago Hospital. We put in a fire alarm system for them. So we're quite capable of designing and engineering a system for the facility that we intend on building here in Metropolis. Right now, we're designing a thirty, we were going to design a twenty thousand. We've decided to go to thirty thousand square foot building. We're going to erect a security fence around the entire property that encompasses the building and the employee parking lot. We're going to secure the perimeter of the building with a UOL listed security system. All the perimeter doors will be monitored, as well as a lot of the interior doors within the building. We're going to have a card access system for all the employees that will restrict areas that they go to, and we will monitor all their movements within the facility. In addition to that, we're going to have an extensive camera surveillance system on the outside of the building, protecting the perimeter of the building, the parking lot for the employees, as well as sensitive areas within side the facility itself. As Mike mentioned, in addition to that, we, we really wanna focus on distributing this product to the central and south-central portions of the state. I have a feeling that most of the folks that are gonna go up into the districts up north are gonna concentrate on selling the product up in Cook County and DuPage, in the high-density areas. We don't know if they're gonna put the same amount of importance on the southern part of the state, and that's what we want, we intend to focus on. We're not saying that we're not gonna sell the product up in the Chicago area. We will. But our primary goal is to sell to the dispensaries down here, have them have access to it. I don't know what else I can add about the company. And Mike went into the background of Kevin and CJ and myself. We are the three principals. Again, to reiterate, we wanna focus on hiring, if we can't, all the employees from Metropolis. We don't know what kind of skill sets some of the folks have here. We're gonna need trimmers. We're gonna need office personnel. So we're gonna need a variety of job skills. If we can't find somebody, and we're gonna obviously hire a lot of people from, from Metropolis, but if there's a particular position that we can't find, somebody qualified for Metropolis, we're gonna stay with the Massach County. So we're gonna try to keep all the, you know, anything that we're spending, vendors, the builder to build the building. I think, Mayor, you know that. We're, we're talking right now with your local builder. And we wanna spend as much money and give as much money back into this community as we possibly can. That, that's our goal. So if you've got any other questions about what we intend to do there, what our plans are, Mike and I are here to answer any questions for city council as well as any of the public that's here.
What question I've had, I think you can answer it.
I hope I can.
We have the news here, and this will be on TV probably Thursday night. I've been asked about the agencies involved in enforcing your laws and procedures pertaining to the cultivation. Can you name the different agencies offhand that will?
Yes. The, there are really four agencies involved. The first one that regulates the cultivation centers is the Department of Agriculture. The agency that regulates the dispensaries is the Department of Financial and Professional Regulation. The agency that regulates the patients is the Department of Public Health. And the agency that reviews the security is the State Police. So one other agency is involved, they're always involved, the Department of Revenue.
There's already many out there.
That lead does. So really, there are five agencies. They're all coordinated by governor's staff. Each, each agency has developed a point person within that agency to, to be the person. Basically, they've created a whole week's issue for each department.
Thank you. That's a great explanation.
Any other questions? Feel free to ask anything you need to. I would say that we're excited. We just gotta keep working and make sure that our applications and support are better than anyone else's. And I feel, I feel very comfortable with the, the gentleman that's involved in this. I think they're, I think they're, they know what they're doing. I feel comfortable with it. I feel more comfortable now than I did, you know, just because I'm, I'm being educated a little bit more on what happens, how it's handled, what it's going to be used for, and things of that nature. And for the city council's information, we are going to have a informational session tomorrow. Well, some of us will probably be there from probably eleven o'clock. We're actually going to have a light lunch at twelve o'clock to one o'clock, and then stay around if need be till two o'clock, just to answer questions. We have a array of distinguished guests that is actually going to be in, in that meeting. We have the police chief, fire chief, superintendent of Massach County High Schools, Dr. Weller from Shawnee Community College, mental health, the drug business, awareness spokes that actually meet up here on, I think, Tuesdays or Thursdays once a month. We have, there's about twenty people that actually have been invited and have accepted. We want anyone and everyone from the city council, if you're free, feel free to come by. It's, it's going to become and go as you please to be a part of that. And first, the news media is actually gonna be there. We've tried to get as many people from our community, just as vers, as we can get. Somebody from the school board is actually going to try to be in attendance and that, and we wanted everything, and, you know, be as visible and as transparent as we can make it. And we hope that we have a good crowd. So feel free, any of yous that are free, feel free to come by, stay as long as you want to, if you wanna stay the whole time. And it will be at the Girl Scout House. So lunch will be from twelve to one. We've tried to accommodate the lunch part of it for the people that actually have to go and go back to work or whatever. That way, for the folks that's not on the schedule can come a little early and stuff like that. We're looking forward to that. And Mike and them will be here tomorrow all day. They're gonna be here Wednesday all day. We're going to try to go to as many places as they choose to go to on a one-on-one basis. I think they've said something about possibly going to the Chamber of Commerce meeting and stuff on Wednesday, and we're just gonna go from there. So feel free to come by anytime you want to. Looking forward to it.
Mayor, I, I asked, I talked to you before, and I indicated I hoped it was a part of one of Rex Graham's, soon as you get your license.
One of the other things I, I didn't mention, just to alleviate any fears, we're only producing this, this product here. We're not selling it here.
Right.
So I want everybody in the community to understand that as well, that anything that leaves that facility, any product that leaves that facility is packaged. And it's gonna be in a truck, and it's, nobody's gonna be able to purchase anything from, from that facility. And one of the other security measures that we've got to make sure that this product does not get out into the community is all the employees that work in there, all of the office people, anybody that works out in the grow facility itself, will be given a uniform, sort of a smock. It's got no cuffs on it. There's no pockets on it. So they're not gonna be able to take any product with them when they leave. So just, we're gonna take every security precaution we can to make sure that product stays secured within the facility until it leaves the facility.
And we're, and that's good, that's good for us. We, we want to be, this, this is a pilot program.
Yes.
You know, it may be around for a long time. It may only be here for three years. Who knows? I do think it'll be around a long time if it's, if it's handled and done for the right reasons. For the ill, if people that actually need this medication, I think it will be a great thing. You know, especially for the ones that, I've had several people contact us, me personally, that they have family members, loved ones, or whatever, that will be dependent maybe on this product. And so it, it gives you something to kind of think about, you know, if you, if you know someone or have someone in your immediate family that has some kind of a illness or a sickness, it just could help, and just go from there. So.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizen requests, or I think most everybody here is family, so. Next item, marriage report. Motion to accept road closure on Market Street to Ninth Street to the Superman statue on Saturday, November the fifteenth, from noon until one-thirty for the perpetration of a ritual setney walk. That is actually, I guess, one of the foundations, or something is actually putting that out. So we do need that. Second. Motion made, Mr. McManus second to Ms. Brown. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept partial closing on Market Street from Eleventh Street to the alley on October the thirty-first, between the hours of five PM and eight PM for the Emmanuel Baptist Church annual trunk and tree. Motion made to Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. Midnight. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept establishing the hours of five PM to eight PM on Friday, October the thirty-first, for trick-or-treating in the city of Metropolis. Make it motion. Second. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to adopt resolution for participation in state of Illinois federal surplus property program. This is a program that we've actually had for several years now, and actually, every so many years, we have to renew the, buy a resolution of that estate. That's what that is. Mr. Carroll moved.
And McManus, second.
And Mr. McManus.
Heard you that time.
Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Under the mayor's report, Saturday, this, this coming Saturday, there is actually, is going to start the youth soccer association's first games. Saturday at ten o'clock, anyone that is available, and I think they're going to have some kind of a dedication, ribbon cutting and things of that nature at the soccer field. So anyone that is free, that will be at ten o'clock this coming Saturday. Unless something happens, I will, I will be out of town.
Okay, good enough.
I was really wanting to. I mean.
Shorts and all, huh?
Yeah. I'm not gonna, you know, my knees are kind of sore and stuff like that, crawling around out there on that field every day looking for army warrants.
Did you find any?
No.
Good.
We have not found any army warrants. But I did tell Mr. Lawson from the drug store that I expected some kind of prescription or something for the pain and stuff, and the old man crawling his hands and knees looking for warrants out there. Plus the hospital come by, and I, I kinda wanted to know if something's wrong with him and stuff like that. But anyway, the soccer fields are doing good, but, you know, they got, all the goals are put together. I think the high school plays. I think the high school plays another game tomorrow. And they will start the association's games and I think, I don't know how many more they had, but as I said before, there's two-hundred-and-sixty-five children from Metropolis and Massach County that are participating in that program, which is a, which is a really good thing. So everybody here, uh, you've got a lot to get proud of. Next item, corporate counsel, Mr. April.
Thank you, Mayor. This first item on here, and, uh, if you don't mind, I'd kind of like to hold that and maybe have a closed session just to talk a little bit. I want to go over the notice and make sure we got things right if we're going to do that. Then we can vote on it if we come back out, if that's what you want, still want to do. That, by the way, those descriptions, that's the, uh, the old fire station property and the Coke building. But, uh, just so we're clear on everything, I want to do that if possible for, before we vote on it. The next item, the most, that's the airport farm. I have not done the one on the, um, industrial part farm, simply because it's a little hard to tell somebody they go out there and farm. And we've got, we've got about three projects we're working on that are going to reduce that by some, I don't know, forty acres or more, fifty acres, probably more than half, at least half in there. So I've been a little reluctant to run something because I wasn't really sure what to do.
Well, you could probably, the only thing that you could safely would be the east side of the, uh, separation ditch there between that ditch and I-24. You know, that goes up to Hillibrand Lane that way. Because if these other projects, uh, the two or three projects we're looking at are all going to be on Beaver's Road. And we certainly don't want, you know.
Well, just give them time for next year's farm. It has been, we, we may have just pulled that out for a year.
Yeah.
Pulled that for a year.
Might be fifty acres in there, maybe.
Yeah.
Probably a pretty good idea, rather than get screwed up.
Yeah.
Because it's going to be late.
That one's going to be really late by the time we get to it and.
So Bob's got a good idea.
We may just hold off on that one. So the one, the airport, there's nothing pending that would affect it.
What we, what we may have to do though is, is, uh, we've done this before, we did it one time before, is rather than let it grow, we don't, we do not want it to get out of hand. But we may enter into an agreement with some farm person or livestock guy or something like that that we actually allow them to take the, uh, hay off of it, just where it's, it's mowed. And in a normal year like this year with all the rain and everything, you could have gotten two good cuttings of hay off of that. And that way you don't have to, we don't have to mow it and use our manpowerd. And, uh, we may have to do that, which we've done.
But we still are legal of some sort if we were going to move it. Mister gentleman. We have to notify them.
We already notified them.
We've done that a long time ago.
We did that back in July that we notified them. And then we sent them both a letter saying it had nothing, it wasn't a reflection on their skills. It was simply a, uh, time to really, to get, put it out there and see what he gets.
Both of them have been notified.
The airport improvements won't interfere with this farmland in any way.
I don't think so.
Federal park machinery and moving dirt and so forth.
Uh, there's, you know, there's, actually, there's quite a bit of ground to park on that's not actually farmed. I mean, if you look on the airport roadside, there's a lot of just stuff we mow out there where somebody could sit something as opposed to, uh, having to stick it out in the cornfield. Because that, there's a hundred-and-seventy-four acres at the airport and they only farm about a hundred-and-twenty at most of it. So there's a good fifty acres there that should be a thing. So that's, that's, the motion would be to seek proposals or bids for a five-year farm lease. And the way I wrote the notice, they could, they could propose either a cash lease or a crop share and, uh.
I'll make that as a motion, second.
Motion made to Mr. Midnight, second by Mr. McManus. Call roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
McManus? Midnight?
Yes.
Hamidah?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is a motion to renew the lease at seven-hundred Market Street for three months. That was the lease that we entered into three months ago. It just expired with, um, Mike and Tommy Carnes, the people that have the, uh, whatnot shop, I guess the old gas company building, um, I don't know better or what they sell. But anyway, they, they have odds and ends and.
Novelies.
Novelies, there you go, novelies. And, uh, uh, they're working on trying to get their financing in order and see if they can get financing for that. That's why we haven't advertised yet, kind of want to wait and make sure, uh, they have paid all their rent and, uh, otherwise been a pretty good tenant. And the lease we did said we would ex, we could extend it three months. So we're just asking for a motion to go ahead and do that.
They are expanding notice and I will make that motion to grant that.
We do have a motion, we do have a second. Call roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes, ma'am.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
Hamidah?
Yes.
Well, that thing we voted on three months ago, how long did it take to renew? Was there a limited number or was it?
Well, there was only, there was only one renewal in that particular lease provided.
Out, if there, you could change it.
You could change it.
You could come back and change it if you wanted.
Well, the reason they'd like to do it for another three, that will give them a, they're going to know for sure what their experience is going to be with a loan at the bank. And that extra three months will give them, uh, a little more exposure of what they can do and what they can't do. You know, I told them, I said, we want to make sure that, you know, it's successful, so you'll, you ought to know by then, so.
In the meantime, they're taking care of it, they don't have to, so it's a good thing. Couple more items that are not on here that I had. First one I was going to take up, uh, Mr. Bybell asked me to, uh, comment a little bit about, some folks have mentioned that the PPA is appearing back on their electric bills. Uh, when, if you recall, in two thousand and twelve, we adopted an ordinance and what we did was we raised the index. The PPA is just an index, folks. It says, hey, if the cost of power, if what the city pays for power gets above this index, the average cost does, then we add, uh, that little difference back into the bill, okay? Well, used to be the index was four-point-nine cents. The indexes, when we changed it, we bumped it up to seven-point-six cents, because that was closer to what current power prices were. If you'll recall, we used to have really high PPA. Now, and for the last couple of years, we had one last year, the year before, we have smaller PPAs and we only have it a few months out of the year. Yes, September, we had it August, September, October, uh, and that's what we're seeing again. And so, uh, just wanted to assure people, we never adopted anything that took it away, okay? We just made it reflect closer to the actual cost of power. This last year, for example, the cost, the average cost of our power that we bought was between seven-point-two and seven-point-three cents per kilowatt hour, okay? This year, coming into this year, we actually budgeted only about seven-point-four. Now, there are some months it'll get above seven-point-four cents a kilowatt hour. Uh, over the long haul, over the next four to five years, the, the I M E A projection is pretty flat on that, okay? It'll go up some, but overall, pretty flat. That doesn't mean there won't be months when it doesn't bump up, months where, uh, we either, in, in, for example, your average cost jumped this summer and the main reason is because you use less. And you think, well, that doesn't, that sounds kind of odd. Well, you've got a certain amount of fixed cost. It's like, if I, if I laid a hamburger out here on this desk and it cost a dollar, but I wanted to divide it between four of you, you'd each pay a quarter. If I cut it into eight pieces where all eight aldermen got a piece, you'd pay twelve-and-a-half cents a piece. If I added the mayor and Jan in, you'd pay a dime a piece for the hamburger. Well, we've got a power plant, we've got lots of power plants, we got contracts and other things. And that costs something, okay, just to have it, whether it produces any power or not. So the more kilowatts we use, the less per kilowatt it costs. And that's what we, that's what our cost is based on. So the more ways we can slice that hamburger, then the better off we are.
That's all I'm going to get, that little piece, give mine to Sonny.
Yeah, but Sonny, he'd charge you a dime and a nickel for it anyway.
Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Stable doing that. I, I was getting several calls, but we did lower it, two thousand and twelve to twenty, twenty-five percent.
It did, it lowered the bills, it didn't lower the PPA, but it lowered the bills, yeah, yeah.
Right, and so I wanted to make sure that we get that in, in the paper so people will understand. And it will go down. Just have Jan also.
It'll go back, yeah, you'll see it disappear again in a month or two.
About three or four months, go a year if it's, you know, normal.
Normal, yeah. If we had a hot fall for some reason, it might stay on for a little bit. But normally, yeah, about November it'll be gone again and you won't see it again until next summer. Now, that said, we are doing a power rate study. Our base rates, uh, which, the PPA is something that gets added to the base rates. In other words, when you get above that, you take a little piece and you add it back to your base rates. So it's like you factor your base and then you, then you use the PPA times the, the usage, okay? So our base rates, we do know, are probably a little low and they're going to have to come up. But marginal, we can bump those over a three-year period and get those back in line. It's not going to take the big jumps and leaps like some communities have seen to get there. But, uh, but the PPA, like I say, it'll, it'll be there a couple of months, it'll go away again. It's no different than it was last year or the year before. The biggest difference is, it's not the big number it used to be. The other item I got is, um, we've had, I've only had one call on this so far, but I kind of wanted to find out if this is something anybody else has heard of or if they want to take it anywhere. And also, I was going to talk, I need to talk, I haven't had a chance to talk to Harry about this. Actually, this guy was referred to you by a couple of officers. You know, if you go back, it's been a year or two ago, we talked about slow-moving vehicles. And we actually had a gentleman that went out and bought something that looks kind of like a big golf cart. And, but it's, it can only go up twenty-five miles an hour, I mean, that's what it's made. And it's got lights and brakes and taillights and turn signals and reflectors and seat belts and, uh, it's, it's got air bell whistle that the law requires to be a slow-moving vehicle. And we told this gentleman, yes, you can, you can drive it in the city because the state law changed. The state law said, now unless we prohibit slow-moving vehicles, they can automatically drive in the city. Well, the legislature did us one better. Because people weren't satisfied with slow-moving vehicles, now they want to drive A T Vs and U T Vs and off-road vehicles as well as ga, uh, golf carts in municipalities. So the legi, the state used to say they're always prohibited. Well, effective this year, they adopted an amendment that says they're always prohibited unless the city, the county, the township, or some other unit of local government tells you, oh, yeah, it's okay. You can drive them on our roads. But they have to be on streets that are under thirty-five miles an hour. Now, the difference between these and your slow-moving vehicles is they don't have a governor on them. These things can, as Harry probably tell you, they can go as fast as cars and trucks in a lot of instances. And so, uh, I mean, my first thought was, my first thought was, this is ludicrous, why would we want to do this? But I, but we did have one citizen call a couple of the officers and see if he could ride his U T V on city streets, because he'd been told he could, he called legislators and said, well, absolutely, uh, the city can let you do that.
So in other words, the cities can let you?
Yes.
So in other words, we're letting, uh, we're going to let?
I don't think we're going to let any of them.
Yeah, this is something we have to discuss, believe me. We're going to spend a lot of time talking about this before we vote on it. This is dangerous.
Well, don't go ahead, you, you're very good.
No, well, you know, we've got A T Vs, you've got four-wheelers, you've got everything out there. So this is going to come before the council, before it's.
It hasn't absolutely.
Go to Mr. Daughtry's.
Yeah, go to her.
Okay.
But, but my question is, do you want to take it up at all, really? Or are we just of the mindset that don't? And I can tell one gentleman, no.
We're dealing with this in the park system and, and the Secretary of State is actually issuing a license plate for these vehicles. They're called low-speed vehicles, call roll.
Oh, no, these are, this is different, this is one more. Low speed, we, we, we've dealt with the low speed that, or, or, they call them, we call them slow-moving, but low speed, yeah. No, now they're just wanting to take regular A T Vs and U T Vs, Chris. They, the statute of those, recreational motorcycles, other off-road recreational vehicles and, uh.
These little scooters, these kids riding.
And I get a copy of that because we'll, we'll have to deal with that in the park system too.
Yeah, 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 there, you can have mine, I'll make another. This just went into effect this year.
We banned the low-speed vehicles.
Did you? Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is something I, I went to one time on a, on a seminar. And there's, there's a whole lot more to it, I mean, from the city's point of view. So if we can stop this, we probably could better off than not doing it. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't understand what's being done. So one time, at least, we probably ought to.
Take it up in a committee meeting?
Make it up in a committee, make sure that we all understand.
Well, and I want to, Harry, have a chance to look at this and comment too, because that, that.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of Gators and four-wheelers.
Yeah, no. You got, you know, you're happy, you got a man.
We have enough trouble with the motorized.
I did see something running around town and it didn't have a license on it, but it, and it was a four-wheel. And I'm thinking, boy, that's, that's a slow-moving vehicle.
Yeah, 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 probably.
Yeah, we need to at least acknowledge this and, and we need to be aware of that.
This one had the plates on it?
It didn't have any plates on it.
No.
No, I'm talking about Massach County, I'm talking about.
I don't take care of that.
No, no, no.
Well.
No, this, this looked like a miniature golf cart, what it looked like.
If it was Mr. May.
No, I didn't pay attention to the rider.
He's the only one I know, he's the only one I know that has one. And, and, you know, to his credit, he went out, he did the research, he put everything under the sun on this.
Right.
This is not your normal golf cart side-by-side or anything like that. It, it, uh, it's got thousands invested in the types of brakes and everything else to meet the law. Most people would not probably want to go to, you know, that's the, that's the trouble with this other one that I see is there'd be a lot of people say, well, the minute we said, oh, you can ride them on our streets, they won't get the equipment necessarily, they'll, they'll just, hey, I thought that was on purpose.
And Harry job twice as hard.
This boat has one that actually regulates it.
Yeah, and we almost need some sort of a class, because a lot of people don't understand where you can only cross at certain intersections.
Exactly.
You cannot cross at Ten Street. At my intersection, you can't cross there, you got to cross at a different spot on Ten Street. Ten Street's really different.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really different because.
This is something that we, we need to be at least aware of.
That would require signage and everything then.
It, yes, sir.
To cross.
If you, and if, that's the other piece of this, the slow-moving didn't require signage, but the, uh, this will require signage everywhere that it's allowed if you do this, yeah.
The real problem is getting across state highway.
And, and I only grant your attention because we do have one person that's called me three times now. But he, he called a couple of police officers and they referred him to me, so that's why.
Well, we, we need to talk about it. So we probably need at least one committee, so we can only run up to speak on it.
All right.
Is that all you've got, sir?
That's all I've got, Phil's close session.
Uh, finance committee, Mr. Barfield, this, all we have is a first reading of appropriations.
Yes, sir. It's all the way, you have everything in a packet, this is not keep you from sleeping, that's for sure. Very illustrated and it's also very concise, but it's really very good.
Next item on, uh, Mr. Barfield, on the Metropolis area tourism commission.
Yes, sir, Mayor, this was from the August the eighth meeting. And I will make a motion on this, I will make a motion to accept recommendations on the grant application for two thousand and fourteen, Massach Encament in amount of thirty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Chris, you have anything?
I'm just here to take, somebody's got a question mainly, but let me say, I want to thank the, the city and the council and the fire department, police department, power, everybody. I mean, it takes the whole community to put this thing on. The word that we're getting back is that it's going to be larger this year than it's ever been because there's a lot more military groups and everything else coming in. There was almost two-hundred thousand last year.
So take them out, top that dish here, then.
Very likely.
Very good.
All right, we do have a motion, we do have a second. Call roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
McManus? Midnight?
Yes.
Hamidah?
Yes.
Thank you.
Director Base Harry Porter, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield.
Thank you.
Barton heads. Harry?
I just have twelve things. The only one thing I have is a request for the three detectives to attend, uh, the homicide investigation class. It's budgeted, we budget it every year. It's, uh, part of the requirements to maintain their proficiency and their certification. Three years ago, four years ago, they changed the rules and any officer that is going to investigate homicide investigations has to be certified and they have to do continuing education and legal updates and something like that. So this class, uh, it's not on the agenda because I was going to do it for the next time because it's in October,
So this class, it's not on the agenda, because I was gonna do it for the next time, because it's in October, but then I forgot to read the whole thing and there's a late, there's an early registration availability, so it'll save some money if if I register by the fifteenth of September, so.
I do have the written request here. It will be less than three thousand dollars for the three to go. It does need to be registered before September the fifteenth.
And it's in October.
We can, if if it's acceptable, we can authorize Harry to go ahead and do it, we can bring it up and ratify it to next city council meeting.
So you're with me? Yes, it just saves us money.
That way he can make his reservations and stuff like that, that will actually be approved money-wise at the next city council meeting.
Which would be.
I thought I was gonna get downstairs.
Would you make a note of that?
I did, I'll give it to you.
All right, that's all we needed there, so.
The, oh, the gator, I guess our guy's on the run, it's over there, so they don't work out good. Thank you.
Steve Morris?
Doesn't just now.
Stony? All right.
Yeah, I just wanna make the council aware, we received our grant permit, we're in the process of reviewing it and we'll be getting it together with the E P A and see if we can change some items on it.
Right.
Is that good or bad?
That's good.
Does, do you have a report maybe on the pipe that's been claimed on the river? Do you have that?
No, I have, it's been completely cleaned, it's mud-free, dirt-free, limb-free, and is running at full force.
Wheel-free.
Wheel-free, yes.
Yeah, wheel-free.
We actually, we had, even before we got, we might have had just a little bit more to do and the last rain we had, there was nothing there in it. The only thing that we may try to do to better that situation is at the inlet.
You know, right.
On the inlet side. Well, we may actually, Stony and them cut some eight-foot post, we may try to go out about six or eight foot and actually drive them posts with a track hole or something like that to make that water go around that to keep any big debris from coming up in there.
They cut some limbs out there, seventeen feet long.
Yes. They weren't very big, I mean, but.
Don't take much time.
Yeah.
That last rain, we did not have backup water on the north side towards the north.
I think that's going to help a lot of different areas, you know, so, and and it's gotta help the drainage all over, because everything comes from, you know, up that area, so we're we're gonna be in good shape there, so. Joe, you have anything for the bedroom of the community?
No, just talking.
All right. Old business.
Hey, can I bring something up?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like for you guys to kind of reconsider for your past appropriations, you know, for your budget plan. You know, I feel like the people, I haven't been able to attend because I've been out because of my surgery, but that these non-bargaining guys and.
We're gonna have a closed session on personnel tonight.
I'd like to see them get a raise and transfer some funds and then, I mean, I think it's only fair that we consider them, they be a lot for the city of Metropolis.
That will be under closed session on personnel, we'll go and discuss that, we have a handout right here, but it does need to be in the closed session. New business.
Yes, sir, Madam, and tomorrow will be a Metropolis Area Tourism Commission meeting here in these chambers at eleven o'clock.
Mayor, I have a report also, the Metropolis Lifehouse Committee will meet Wednesday, September the tenth at two P M. in the council chambers to establish the Hope Light Dedication and Lightning Ceremony, and all interested persons are welcome.
Anything else anybody has under new business? Remember the meeting tomorrow. Miscellaneous reports, anyone? Finance reports, payment of salaries, payroll and contract bills. Call and roll please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
McManus? Midnight?
Yes.
And my zip.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, payment of miscellaneous bills. Call and roll please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
McManus? Midnight?
Yes.
And my zip.
Yes.
We do need a closed session for personnel. Sale lease or exchange of real estate and just a. Yeah, if nothing else, just for informational, I think so. So we do need a motion.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
McManus? Midnight?
Yes.
And my zip.
Yes.